I'd like to call the Thursday, August 28th, 2025 Smithfield School Committee meeting to order. I should put this on. Before we begin, if we can, please stand for the school flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Emergency evacuation in case of emergencies. You can either turn left or the right-hand side through the sets of double doors, follow the exit signs out. If you need to use the facilities, same thing, you have the right doors and there, you turn left here and there's the facilities. And you turn right here and there are facilities. Okay, there's basically just, there is a public comment sign up chief, anybody wants to, and we do speak. We have a podium, somebody has to speak. However, there's really just one issue tonight, we're going to discuss review and approve of the stage two construction project. And the entire branch was over here, just kind of give us some breakdown. The building committee just met, I know it for you during the audience, and made a recommendation. But he has all the numbers of the items that were on the original list. And we go through it and we know what the recommendation was and where that fits and we can talk about what we're going to do. So, having said that, Patrick, you may take it away.
Great, so I am Patrick Roller, I'm the Callers Project Leader, the OPM for the two movies products in the stage two submission. So today we, last meeting, we presented the, this, or the documents with all the drawings of the various projects that we're targeting. That were honed in from the very beginning of this process. And we've gotten the estimate, or estimates back from the cost estimator and have gone over those. And like I said last time, we had hard decisions to make. So we knew that the cost that we were looking at from whatever that was seven years ago was, or four years ago, I don't remember. But we knew that those were lower than what they were going to come in at. And so with those costs that have come in now, what I'd like to do is go through several different explanations real quick. So if you guys can just kind of hang with me for a minute, let me walk you through what we're going to be talking about. And then we'll open up for questions and discussion and those sorts of things. So there are some criteria that are established in an estimate, it's on the second page. And the big thing that we want to look at is the assumptions and then the exclusions. Specifically with the exclusions, design fee and soft costs are not included in this price. And so I have calculated that on a separate sheet and we'll talk about that here in a few minutes. So in looking at the various projects that we've put in front of the estimator, the bathrooms have each been estimated as individual projects. So these don't reflect the assumed cost savings that you might see if you were to bundle a lot of them with one award. But the other thing that we have to keep in mind is that we're working off of capital. So making those decisions to do it all in one go can be a little bit harder in that regard. The lecture hall came in at a much higher cost than we had initially anticipated, eight hundred eighty-three thousand. Culinary arts was just a little bit over, well, relative, I guess, over what we anticipated, which was six hundred fifty thousand, came in at seven hundred fifty-five thousand. The emergency generator options, we had several different options that we reviewed. The first option was to essentially just update the service of the current generator, which is thirty years old and is hard to find parts to replace. And that was obviously below its cost. Option three was to get rid of the existing generator, or no, I'm sorry, excuse me. That was to, yeah, get rid of the existing generator and set up a panel that would be ready for a rented generator. It does not assume operating costs of the annual cost per year being in line for a generator. And then that would have to be brought out in the time of a catastrophe and a need. And so then option two was to get rid of the existing generator and install a new generator of a smaller capacity that was dual fuel and would still serve the entirety of the building. For fire suppression, we looked at two different options. One was exposed piping, one was concealed piping. The exposed piping would run below ceiling, existing ceilings, and the concealed piping would be installed above existing ceilings. Obviously, a much more invasive process and more expensive. The fire alarm panel updates, we were pleasantly surprised during the investigation period. SLAM looked at the various devices that were installed and panels and determined that we actually don't need to replace all the devices if we want to move from a proprietary system to a non-proprietary system. So that cost, which we initially had like five hundred thousand dollars for, came in at thirty-one thousand dollars. So that was a nice little positive. For the elevators, we had talked about this in the last meeting, the ability to modify the existing elevators to be ADA compliant and to be a proper size to function as an elevator does in today's day and age. It would be exorbitant to do that within the housing of the building. And so instead of working within that, I think it was a ninety thousand dollar, you know, kind of budget that we had, instead of working within that, SLAM went ahead and looked at two different approaches. In each school, the high school and the middle school, to install an exterior CMU shaft elevator. And that, these are the reflective costs, just so that there's some more data there to consider. And then we had removed and replaced the existing roof at one point seven million. That is the essentially, well, more than three quarters of the roof that is there on the science wing, of which part of that has been replaced when the tree fell and that roof system is currently out of warranty. And then we had the quiet life skills room at the middle school, the ISE room. And that number, we believe, is a little bit higher than it should be. So SLAM is going to go back and talk with the estimator, but that number is about four hundred and thirty-six thousand. So those are the estimates. What I'd like to do is bring us back to the, one second here. I'm about to close one off to it. Okay, I'm going to look at the five-year capital budget plan. So this was the plan that was developed at the beginning of this process, where we took a great number of projects totaling, as you might remember, twenty-six million dollars. And we narrowed that down to high priority projects and to the tune of roughly four point three million dollars. So for the bathroom renovations, we had established, again, based off of kind of a spitball estimate from a while ago, the two million dollars for that, six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the culinary room renovations. Emergency generator and fire suppression project was one point one. Elevator renovations was ninety thousand, hoping that something could just be upgraded. And then the high school roof replacement was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then we had the ISE room update, or upgrades slated at about fifty thousand. So the thing to keep in mind here is this is the number that we're kind of working toward or around is at four point three million, as we want to make sure that we can afford this in the next five years. And so just before this meeting, I'll be red water real quick. Just before this meeting, we met with the, or the school building committee met. And we reviewed all of these projects based off of their hard costs, which is from the estimate, which is this line here. And then we used the Rye values based off the Rye worksheet to calculate soft costs, which is a twenty percent, eighty percent split. So eighty percent is considered hard cost, twenty percent is considered soft cost. The default values, they can be shifted around a little bit, but you want it, it all has to be within twenty percent. So it's seven percent for your architect, five percent for your management and commissioning, two percent for miscellaneous costs and fees, and six percent for your contingency, this would be the owner's contingency. So when we take the hard cost and we add it to the soft cost, we wind up at these values down here on the black line. So for the toilet rooms, three point six, lecture hall, one million, culinary arts, nine hundred thousand, emergency generator, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. This is pricing option number two, which is the replacement of the existing generator with a new smaller generator. Fire suppression, using the below ceiling option, because the above one blows the entire four point three million dollars and goes over it. That comes in at one point five. The fire alarm panel upgrades is thirty-eight thousand. The new elevators at the middle school and the high school, just to see the number, is two point six million dollars. The high school roof replacement is around two million, which we think is a little bit higher than it's going to come in at. And then the ISE renovation is five hundred and twenty-three thousand. So it's a total of twelve million dollars of total projects. Now, I'll tell you the same thing that I told the school building committee. As we're looking at these numbers and we're considering how they, how we got from four point three to twelve, we have to remember that these numbers that we started this process with were all pre-COVID numbers, all right? So we're already working with a large amount of economic change that's happened over the last five, six years. And you can attribute probably, probably close to half of that amount to be economic inflation and cost changes in the industry. So, but that doesn't change what we have to do, right? We still have to get down to that four point three million. So as part of that exercise with the school building committee, they identified that these projects would kind of fit within what the priority was for the various projects going on, as well as gave us a little bit more than we are anticipating being able to necessarily spend. And then we're going to talk to Rye and figure out how much extra we can go in with. Because if we need to pivot partway through, then we want to have the flexibility to do that and still receive a reimbursement. And if for some reason Taylor Swift decides to move to Smithfield, then maybe we get a bunch of extra money, who knows?
Either way, I will ask her.
One second there. The other thing that Patrick had mentioned to us in the building committee meeting is that you can select this group to put forward as part of the five-year plan. You can reprioritize them throughout that five years as you see fit. So that decision doesn't have to happen at this point. So my thought process behind part of the discussion was that we put a little bit more in now, so we have that flexibility. Because if it's not in there, then you can't tackle it within those five years. But we don't want to go too much over that number, obviously, we have to budget appropriately, but we're hoping to see some flexibility.
So the approval is the targeted spend, it's not necessarily the actual spend. You just don't want to deviate too, too far from what your targeted spend is in actual spend. Again, we're operating from capital, so it's a little bit of a different situation than if you're operating from bond. So the target projects are the toilet rooms, all of them, so all seven that are currently being considered. The emergency generator option two, fire alarm panel updates is a gimme, that's an easy one to include. The house, or the high school roof replacement and the NSISE renovation, with the understanding that that's probably going to come down a little bit. So we end up with a total project value of six point nine million, right around seven million, or five point three million dollars in hard cost. The...
That four point three million figure you gave us earlier, was that total cost or was that hard cost?
The four point three million is, is total fund. So that's, that's the total cost, not the hard cost, or not just hard cost.
Well, what was the hard cost?
That's the total expenditure.
What's the hard cost that's associated with that one, that four point three million?
So again, we didn't have hard costs that were associated with that. We just had these documents to work off of, which were the initial estimates with funding. So I do have the presentation that we reviewed last time up with some costs attributed to the bathrooms on each of the different areas. And we can look through and talk through any of these documents. So I guess at this time, I'll, I want to reiterate that the recommended motion from the SBC is for these projects. And I will open it up for questions in the session.
Just so you know, we spent a lot of time talking about elevators. And they are not in this list. What we did talk about though, was investigating chairlifts of both the schools as a cheaper cost. And obviously, it has to fit into the fire and building code, whatever, and whatever the cost is. But these two numbers here, one point one and, well, they're almost both one point one, just broke everything to pieces. That's why we didn't go there, okay?
And in addition to just the cost, David had brought up the fact that if we were to put the elevator at GMS, you would be disrupting two classrooms, to the point where you wouldn't be able to hold a classroom and they wouldn't be able to hold students. And that building is already at capacity with classrooms. And that's what it means when an exterior place that is shown on the map. So the, and the cost would, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, it would more than possibly double if we tried to expand current elevator in the place that it is today.
I, I think you would run into that very close.
So we have literally no options with the elevator that caused us to move to remove it and explore the chairlift option. And I don't think we could do that over summer, install an elevator over summer inside the building.
I know, that's tough with the chairlift, it doesn't help a wheelchair get up the stairs.
Actually, it does.
It will, so there's one that does?
Angelo.
Yeah, the administration of the...
Oh, that one is, I didn't notice that.
Is wheelchair accessible?
Oh, it is?
Has a big platform that rides up.
Right on the back of it?
It's always down.
It's not a seat, it's a platform.
It's a platform.
It's a platform if you were wanting to, or if you needed assistance, there is a seat that would fold down.
With the complete understanding that the chairlift is much less ideal than elevators. But not even just cost, there's also issues with the water table at the middle school that we, it's possible we wouldn't even be able to, and very wise, be able to put an elevator because the water table is so high. And you'd have to drill down into the ground for the shaft of the elevator.
And while you might be able to do it, it's just going to cost a lot more. Because you'd have to drive piles and then you would have to have additives to your concrete that would prevent water intrusion. It's a whole, almost like a marine type project.
I was going to say like an oceanfront, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we also kind of took the lecture hall, just asked a few questions if we could do a few things. And the culinary arts, we took those two off the off-the-board as well. As, as what you already know, the fire suppression one was just too ridiculous. And the other one, we, we again, settled into the elevators, really cut into other stuff we needed to do. Yes?
When will we get a, I mean, is the, the cost of the chairlifts, when will we see that reflected in any sort of the estimates looking forward?
So, just give them those orders fifteen minutes ago.
As far as the chairlift cost goes, those are typically sold by ADA accessibility companies or companies that specialize in that. They would provide a quote, we would have to determine the stairway that we wanted in, whether or not that stairway would be allowed to have a chairlift based on its size and clearances. And then we would have to have them generate a quote. So I don't know that it would be hopeful to think that we could turn that around in anything other than a general order of magnitude conversation, not even a feasibility study, just a, or a feasibility conversation, but a order of magnitude. To think that it's going to be anything other than that would be hopeful before the...
Gotcha.
All right. I'm just, I'm just looking to, to be presenting the most realistic thinking.
And in an order of magnitude, include an estimate, a range of...
So order of magnitude would typically be me on the phone explaining to the vendor what our situation is, maybe sending them some photos, giving them some generalized measurements. Then they would say, you're looking in the range of a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand, or a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand.
Not specific, but a range, a range is better than what we have right now, it's nothing.
Correct. But, but the number of times that I've gotten in order of magnitude and that, and it is varied by more than a hundred percent, right? The larger the number you go, the less you see that amount variance. But for small onesy-twosy items, like it can, it can draft, like one thing that they didn't understand correctly based on the existing condition can drastically change that cost.
And what's up to us, which stairway, it has to, we have to determine that.
Well, it would be up to the, the town manager was saying that depends on the whole entity of code.
Right, so, so those companies should have a good understanding of what the code is and what stairways would be accepting of those systems. And their system might be proprietarily designed to provide clearances in a specific way that others can't. So they, they would tell us generally, I would look to them to have them tell us what those clearances would need to be and what stairways would be acceptable.
So nothing but order of magnitude by the seventeenth or sixteenth, whatever the date, sixty?
Yeah, and that's, that's provided I can convince somebody to give them.
I got you, I got you. The idea, like I said, came up fifteen, twenty minutes ago, so, okay.
But then another part of that is, sure, bathroom, toilet room, the set seven is the second floor, correct?
Seven is the second floor, correct.
If I understood the, the conversation of the building committee.
Yep.
We would be changing that at a reduced cost to make that one ADA compliant, so.
Well, not reduced cost, it would take a couple, to make it ADA, we'd have to take a couple of units out of it.
Right, so we would go from a dual stall on the left to a single stall. And then you would go from a triple stall on the right to a dual stall with the ADA accessibility, yes ma'am?
Yes.
Come on, go ahead.
Matt and I are raising our hand. We, we have some accessibility problems at the door coming in. You can solve that by putting one of the push button operators on, but the door particularly, the one that's on the right-hand side, you see that extra plump wall there? Precludes the handicap approach that you need. So where we might save some in some toilet... Costs, there'll be some, so it may end up being basically right where it is, money-wise.
So that four eighty-one figure is, it's got to say where it is, basically, right?
For, for instance, if you got into this chase and that chase had a pipe right up against the wall, then now you have to pay them with that pipe and not just adjust the chase. But if the, if the pipe were further along in this space and it was just boxed out that way for aesthetic reasons, then we might be able to carve that back. It just depends on what's actually there when you open up the wall.
And the men's room would, again, think the changes, lose a couple of urinals because now you're taking that bottom swath for...
Right, and, but this was the only toilets that we addressed on the second floor, in all of our...
It's the only one due to the second floor. You have to still exist there.
Yeah, there, there were on the old, Angela, if you want.
Just a question, as a point of innovation, both those bathrooms do not have to be ADA compliant, correct? You could have a unis, one unisex bathroom on the second floor, if that cost were to be that extreme.
Sure.
So we could change it to a...
You could have a handicap bathroom that was unisex and then the other bathroom would not be. Both would be unisex bathrooms, just won't be ADA compliant.
And won't be ADA, as, as opposed to as drawn here?
Correct.
If we thought it was problematic.
Are you suggesting we turn each of these into single-person bathrooms? You still can't get it?
Just once.
What do you do with the other bathrooms? A lot of fixtures on the second floor. Then it's the only bathroom separate on the second floor.
But it would be only ADA compliant bathroom.
I get what you're saying, but I don't think the cost differential of turning those into ADA is going to be significantly different than the cost of renovating them the way, the way that they are now. As opposed to, to reducing the number of fixtures to make one of them unisex and the other one essentially becomes unisex, because... Right, you don't have one on that before.
Didn't we have bathrooms that, that got turned into rooms?
They did, yeah.
And is that plumbing infrastructure still there? Maybe it's in the wall, just in the wall?
So I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what you're getting at is spending money on these if we don't have an elevator upstairs or something, or am I wrong?
No, I'm thinking if, if the goal is to get wheelchair or handicap accessibility upstairs, then we need to have at least one ADA compliant bathroom.
Once you get it, right, okay, all right, I get that. All the same way, I mean, I took the negative, you took the positive, there you go, all right.
I just, I didn't know if the savings on one of the bathrooms, because we're eliminating some of the work there, would potentially... And again, we're not dealing with real numbers, so I just didn't know if that, that four eighty-one planned for it still or is that four eighty-one possibly absorbing the cost of the lifts? But we can't really expect...
One little more piece of information, just because you guys are really good at absorbing things. The code does not require you, even though you would have access to the second floor, they would not require you to make those bathrooms accessible because you are allowed to ask people to travel one floor up or down to get to an accessible restroom. Just as a piece of information, not saying it's a bad idea, just because somebody might ask you at some point. It's a little weird, but that's one of the things they do allow.
A lot of laws are weird, okay.
I have another question, this is more of a, maybe an operational high school question, so I might go to you, Dawn. But for a while, we heard there was only a certain amount of bathrooms opened during the school year. Are all of these even open? Do we even open them? How does that, are the openings open?
From what I understand, their bathrooms open on both the first and second floor. Some are closed during certain times of the day. For instance, the airport-style ones first thing in the morning, that's an area that there's been a lot of vaping, et cetera, and late assist to class, so the administration is closing that off and directing students to using the other bathrooms and go directly to class.
So these ones, the ones that, the new, yeah, just in the morning.
And then later when there's supervision.
I was just wondering if we utilized essentially all of these bathrooms? You know, like if we're using them, if we're not using, if we're going to replace them all and not use them, what's the point of spending five hundred thousand on a bathroom if we're not even using them?
Well, I, I started out the conversation by saying, if people that remember two years ago, all the discussion we had on, on another social issue, if you will, and no matter where you stood on that issue, the one thing that came very clear from parents and students of the bathroom was terrible. And that they needed new bathrooms. We needed more, kids were going holding things, that only helps the urologists of America. And the, also, some were going to the nurse's office, which you also found out, doesn't have a sink in it. And so that's one of the reasons we concentrated on this. And you're right, if, if we've, if we've spent money on these things, they better be open, okay?
But that's an admin issue, right? Don't disagree, but I think we have to tackle it.
If you build it, they will.
You mentioned now, now, staffed.
You mentioned the nurse's bathroom doesn't have a sink and it's not tied into this...
It is, it is.
Oh, it is, it's one of these, oh, okay.
One of these, I think it's four, but I don't know, three, five, four.
Four or five, five.
Four or five, five, yeah.
It's five, yeah, okay.
One of the lower cost?
Yeah, two, six, seven.
Yeah, so five comes in at two sixty-seven.
It's a big space, just, I appreciate that and that's the same.
The other thing I want to point out that I didn't point out further is in the assumptions section. So escalation has been included in these estimates, but, so that we have some flexibility based off of order of projects that has been included, escalation's been included to begin in, as if the projects were starting or being bought out in twenty twenty-six, March of twenty twenty-six. So for all of these, there will be a, an amount, depending on how they're sequenced, that will be applied per year. That's usually somewhere between two point five and four percent for each year that that project is held off on. So for instance, if we waited three years to do the roof, it would see four percent next year, four percent the year after, four percent the year after. Right, it's kind of worst case based off of what we've seen in recent history. So just to keep that in mind, that this number will, will go up depending on how it's sequenced. Which also depends on information that David is going to provide regarding its funding.
Another question, that nurse restroom, does that include a changing table at all?
Not a built-in one. And there wouldn't be room in that configuration for a changing table in the nurse's space.
I'm just thinking a sick child, that may, you know, that, where would they, you know, if you're thinking of somebody with needs in the nurse's space, where do they go? That's the only, if we're redoing bathrooms, that's...
I don't think there's a changing table in that nurse's that wants any now, or trying.
Not in the bathroom, but outside of...
Right, not within the bathroom.
So there is a separate space within that nurse's, all right, I can't tell for these.
Yeah, you're not, you're not talking about nursing, a changing table for an infant or, you're talking about a high school or...
Right, yes, yes, a high school, if you do that needs...
Where the cursor is now, is the Lankot Room. In that room, there's a curtain with a changing table.
Okay, okay.
So the, the bathrooms that we were just zoomed in on are these right here, in the middle between those two towers.
But it is right there.
Yeah.
And we, you know, something like the culinary arts, if we were to find a, let's say, a corporate sponsor or something like that, we at least would have numbers here, okay? That would not go into our plan, that would be, hey, Mr. Corporate Sponsor, how'd you like to upgrade things? So that's the type of thing. I'm not saying we're having one, I'm just saying it's a...
All right, I was looking at bathrooms, like, wait a minute, people sponsor bathrooms? You get a plaque on the toilet.
Slugs out of your mouth.
Exactly.
I can make a call to Lysol if you want.
Whatever works, whatever gets us more money, I guess, at this point.
Other questions? So what you have, what, what Patrick outlined there, the six point nine in hard cost, I'm sorry, in, in total cost... So what you have, what, what Patrick outlined there, the 6.9 in hard cost, I'm sorry, in, in total cost, 5.3 in hard cost. That's what the building committee recommended, if you want, we recommend it, then it goes to the town council.
I have another question.
Yes, but, don't go, I'm not trying to rush, I'm just trying to tell you where we're at.
That 6.9 in hard cost, where did that come from?
Well, it goes to the state for approval, let's assume they approve it, and then we get what we get from the town. Keep in mind, on, on capital projects, we are a hostage of whatever we get in each budget year. A few years back, we got three years in a row of zero, and we got one with like 25 or 50,000, something very minor that they didn't tell us about. And we've gotten some in the last few years, so the, the council has to know that, they have to know, you have to have a way of funding this thing. Short of a bond, you say the word bond, they all, you know, they all crawl under the chairs. So you've got to have a, a way to, to fund this, in, in our simplest way, in the way we're working on everything. And the way their capital plan works is to have it done under the, the capital budget. So we would be looking to get, I'm just kicking around over here, we got, we got 500 million this year, uh, 500,000, 500 million, 500,000. If we got 500,000 for X number of years, you know, that puts us up at 300,000. Remember, we get 35% reimbursement if we do a good job, which so far we have. So to answer where it comes from, it comes from us selling the town council in future years to fund this.
And keep in mind that annually, each year, whatever project you got done during that year, you would claim, and then you would get your 35% reimbursement, which would then roll into the next year.
Right.
But the nu, so the number he was sharing at the beginning, the 4.3 million was the number that the director of finance had projected we could spend based on our capital. So that's why this is over the 4.3 million, but it gives us the flexibility to pivot and, you know, re-prioritize some of these projects in with the hopes that some of them would come in under specifically the bathrooms that they're clustered together.
Right, yeah, we, we have that on the, on the bathrooms, we're also hoping that the number on the middle school room, life schools room comes down a bit. And the others, we're pretty much where they are. And the chairlifts are out there, we, we got to get races, but even if that gets thrown off as a project some other time, but we'll, at some point we have to address it. Can't keep kids up to the second floor, that's not good, either school.
And so obviously we're not going to do bathroom number seven first either when we set our priorities.
Yeah, right, and maybe the last one done. So we can, we can include chairlifts into what we're sending to the state?
I, I would need to look at that, since attached to the building, I would, I would imagine that it would be a reasonable ask, but when I talked to Ride about this other.
Please do that, I mean, I don't want to have them miss it and then we all of a sudden get a great deal on a chairlift and it's something we, we can do. We should do if we can.
Just on that, have we ever seen like grants for accessibility, like accessibility grants for chairlifts? Have we seen Ride, like where a chairlift, we could put it into some type of accessibility for all grant, something of that?
The only ways that we've pursued, that we've seen are instruct, related to instructional resources, so we haven't seen any that are structured related.
Alright, I wasn't sure if that was a thing or if I'm making up my head, it sounds great, so.
I think that typically, Ride's approach is the, the reimbursement rate, that's the easiest way to kind of make sure that there's funding that comes back to the schools through the hall of gate money, right, but they don't have to approve all these different use cases, right? With this general 35% provided that they can certify.
Just a question. Being a chairlift, would it be entitled to more than 35% reimbursement? For the health and safety versus ADA?
You might, if it was a separate project, you might be able to get an additional 5%.
If we pulled it out of this?
No.
No, but.
There are, there are two standing additional bonus point discounts or bonus point added reimbursement percentages. One is health and safety projects, that's a permanent bonus, so if your project is, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head, I think it's like 70% or 75% or more of that cost is directly related to a health or safety issue, which is defined in Ride's guidelines, then you get an additional 5%, so for Smithfield, that would mean going from 35% to 40%. For regional school districts, you can also get an additional 5%, which doesn't apply to us. So those are the two permanent bonuses, all of the other temporary bonuses that kind of spurred the last five years of immense amounts of school construction across Rhode Island, all of those have now expired, and so now we are working with those two permanent bonuses.
Thank you.
So Patrick, would fire alarm panels fall under that, would?
They would probably fall, correct?
Would the generator fall under that after that?
We can make the argument.
A fallout shelter, because it's a town fallout shelter, so that's the point that I would bring forward with Ride. But that's just, we're very conservative staying after the 90s, that's good for budgetary reasons, but there are options for additional 5% in a few of these projects.
I want to find out what else.
I mean, yeah.
It is, it's health.
For, for each of these, you would go through and you'd look at the criteria that Ride presents and you would make your argument for it, right? And then they would decide.
Other questions?
I have a couple. The, so at what point do we have to set the project order? Because my, my curiosity is the, the roof on the science wing. It's, it's on there for, it's on there for a reason, so are we having structural problems right now with the two areas that are the old roof? Like, where, where does that, where do you feel, Angela, that that has to fall in line?
Well, the first one is the answer to where we have to set it, because I think Patrick will tell you that.
So, yeah, so, so we discussed it with the SBC, doing it in two phases, so we're talking about a, a 1.7 million dollar project here. Let me get the roof, which is right here. So we've got two sections of the roof, so this hatched area is the area that's already replaced because of the tree falls. So we have the area to the right and the area to the left, this could be approached as two phases, which means you could do it faster than you would have to wait to pay money, right, for the full 1.7 or wherever it comes in at. And so you could tackle half of the roof and then tackle the other half of the roof a couple of years later if there was a need. And that's kind of what spurred the conversation about being able to be a little bit more flexible in how we actually decide to go about those projects. When we, on the 15th, we have to have a proposed order, so that's going to go in front of Ride because it's part of our calculation for how it's funded, right? And then if you change the order, then Ride is typically okay with that, but provided that you have a funding source and that it doesn't, you know, curtail the rest of your program, so.
Now back to your question, Angela, was do we have problems right now with what you were getting at, right?
So your roof is compromised, on the outside edge of that is called the parapet, that has like a 24 inch horizon that comes up. The roof is actually pulling away from that, as, now, so when that fails and begins to break, the roof is also a ballast roof. So we chase roof leaks in that roof, we have to shovel stone to find where that leak is. It is non-warranty, so everything that we do to that roof to repair that leak is a cost. And when a roof begins to go, it goes faster and faster. Whenever, and we talk about, it's almost like cost savings, like when we talk about doing a multitude of bathrooms, you almost save like close to a million dollars. When you do a roof in sections, if you did the whole roof and even if you had it as an add-on, to say, as value management, it came in too high, I would rather send out an entire roof for replacement, you would get a better price from a vendor, from a contractor, and if it came in too high, you could then value manage and say, what would be as an add-on to fit the center of the roof? That's my approach to it, to be conservative.
We also talked about too, if you piece it together, now you're running with two different warranties, like half of it is in one warranty and half's the other, not ideal feasible.
Question two, insurance standpoint, would we save money since the roof would be upgraded?
The odds are no, because it's only one part of our whole thing, if you let the roof deteriorate, then they might hit you with penalties, and they might raise your premiums, but I don't think it'd save money by having, you know, with the pro act.
If the roof's updated within a certain amount of time, it would be dependent on the insurance company that we have, but I'm just saying for.
And I don't think, I don't think we've got any negative thing to fix that roof on, that I know of.
No, but it is failing and you don't want to get to the point of mold remediation, deterioration.
Gets in and.
When a roof fails and not to go, so the first thing that happens, you have a leak, now you have a steel deck that's below that, your deck begins to deteriorate, now you have to replace decking also, which brings the cost of that roof twice as high. So the sooner you repair a roof prior to leaks of severity, the better off you are when it goes out to bin or the repair.
And the insulation gets wet, you have to wait, and that, you know, but here's the other thing to remember, we get a half a million a year, and we say in year one, let's do 1.7 million, and let's say the quote comes in, 1.7 million, we get a half a million. We're going to straddle the year and we're still only at a million, so that's where some of this management's going to come in. And the repairs that he makes, that's coming out of our operating budget, so, you know, you don't want to get too much, especially if it starts going too bad. But that's, but that's true with everything on here, you know, with half a million, get a half million in next year, and then as you pointed out, your 35% plows in in the second year that you earned in the first year, so you get it then and, you know, it keeps going like that.
Understood.
Okay?
Last question, just more general about the generators. Is the generators' use here to keep school functioning, or it's just because of our fallout shelter? In the event of an actual disaster or emergency? And the, and the reason why I ask that is, if it's not to keep school going, are conversations happening with the town department of emergency management to share or absorb that cost if we're not using it for keeping schools operating or if we're using it for emergency self use?
Man?
Yes? I don't need you.
To answer that question, I'll go back to the original generator, that was in the school when the school was built. That generator served just emergency lighting and the elevator, which is code compliant and still is. Generator, if you have to have a generator in school and you have a second floor, it has to do emergency lighting and service the elevator. The thought process was, when they put in that larger generator, 750 kilowatt, that they would expand onto, since it was a fallout shelter, they would expand that electrical service throughout the building in a phased manner, that never happened. Thirty years now it's falling, even the switchgear, that, the switchgear is when the power drops out and what runs on the generator and powers portion of the building, is undersized for what we currently have, to expand that, we can't even expand from what we have. So the thought process was to say, okay, we got a smaller generator, it's a fallout shelter, let's install a new generator, and then as years go by, let's expand through the building, that never came forward, if that answers your question.
It answers part of it, the, the large, the larger question is just, it's such a huge chunk, it's a big percentage of the money for all these projects, and I'm just wondering why we're responsible to absorb 100% of that cost if it's not directly for.
I had asked that in an earlier building committee meeting with the town manager, and there was not clarity as to if the town would be willing to do something like that. It did not sound like it was in our favor.
Yeah, a good place would be when we have one of our quarterly meetings, that's, that's like, put that one around the agenda.
Yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be a number one, yeah.
It is, it's a, you know, or they can pick up a cost for us and pay it, and that has only to do with school, you know what I mean? Fair is fair, right, but, alright, that's, that'll get settled another day, other questions? So if everybody's in favor, a motion would be.
Wait, sorry, I have a question.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
What you just asked, so that, is that that F, emergency?
Yeah.
So we don't know if that is essentially just a school thing, right?
No, we know that it's getting absorbed through our.
It's ours, it's here, yeah, we own it right now.
It's ours, for functionality for school, we'd like to have them pitch in, but if we're looking at cost savings, like if we have to vote on that right now, does that essentially, you know, I, I didn't really hear the answer to your question. So does that impact school functionality? That's the question about.
So your backup generator serves multiple purposes, your IT systems, your mainframe, like your main data frame.
Okay, so it does.
That's cool.
It has a, it has a 30 minute or three hour, whatever it is, battery to it, but once that dies, it's done. So if you ran into a hurricane type situation or a flood that knocked out power in the area for an accident period of time, that generator would keep that system up?
So, yeah, so it does impact school, okay, that's all I, yeah, right, yeah.
And we, we can argue later if, if how much, what size would we need or whatever, just to do those type of things, but that's for another day.
So essentially, it does, that's all I, that.
Does enough where if we lose our, if we lose that, we're drunk.
I wasn't sure if it was just for an emergency shelter situation, I'm like, wait, okay, but now that's more, thank you.
Okay, further questions? If not, then I would recommend that we make a motion, basically what the school building committee did, but I would have the word, you know, chairlifts in there somewhere, I don't think that was in the, just so that we have that angle if something should develop.
Motion to approve the recommendation presented by the building committee with the addition of exploring chairlifts, second.
Okay, the motion is made, second, further questions or comments or anything? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it, and that is it, there's no public comment, and that's it, so discuss and review that. Discuss if you agree with approval of stage two construction project. Well, that's what we just did. Put in the wrong place, consider and draw a motion to adjourn before I say anything else, stupid.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Alright, motion made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got it, thank you, I can do this.